Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Special Town Council meeting on Thursday, July 9th, 2020 at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. As we call this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the government's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This special town council meeting is being conducted via in-person of council members as well as remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.cii.southbridge.mas as soon as we are able to. Just mute whoever that caller was so that they don't interrupt. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivi- individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
President.
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 Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Present.
All members present. Item three, considering acceptance of special town council meeting minutes of June 25th, 2020. Is there emotion?
Some move.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Steve.
Just one minor thing on item number nine.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Just under item number nine, I just wanted to recognize that I was voting, that I voted no on it for the same reason you did.
Okay. You have that correction. All right. Any other corrections, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Counselors Lazo, Counselors Dow, and Counselor Ryan will abstain. Citizens forum. We have the committee members in the back that participated, but are there any citizens online that wish to address the Southbridge Town Council at this time on anything not on the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Daniel.
You're muted. I don't know if they can hear you.
Thank you. Any citizens wish to address the town council on anything not on the agenda this evening? Anybody online? Seeing none? We'll move on. Item five, very happy tonight to start with the discussion and review of the interviews with the finalists for town manager, which were Michael Kramer, Thomas Guarino, and Michael McCall, conducted on July 7th, 2020, at the special town council meeting. First, before we start, just want to take this opportunity to thank all my colleagues that were here Monday night, Tuesday night, sorry. It's a long week already. Tuesday night that when we did those interviews, I think we had a robust round of discussions. I think it started on Monday night when we talked about the questions and the candidates and how we would proceed. We had three very good quality candidates that were brought forward by our search committee, and those search committee members are here this evening, and I want to make sure that we recognize and thank them. First off, former council chair David Landevan, resident Bonnie LaSavio, and resident Pete Canoria, as well as my two colleagues on the council, Counselor Katrona and our vice chairman, Counselor Daniel. I want to just commend all for the hard work that you did in this search. I know that it's one of the most important tasks that we have as counselors to appoint a town manager to lead our town, and we rely on citizens as well as our fellow counselors to make sure that they bring forward the best candidates through the screening processes allowed by the charter to lead our town. I have to say, in my 30-plus years, I think, living in, well, I've lived here all my whole life, but my adult life being involved in the local political arena, I do want to say that by far in recent memory, this was the most professional, well-run search that I can remember. A lot of times you see the politics in town go through and you see a lot of leaks and everything. I have to say that this committee did a fabulous job in maintaining the integrity of the search and making sure that we were given the best information and the best candidates. So I want to thank you all for that because it was very important, and the candidates that were before us on Tuesday night were diverse, had breadth of experience, and I think we're lucky to have any one of those three candidates. So it was a great search, and I'm sure, as my fellow counselors discussed this evening, the results of that, we have a tough decision to make, but I'm sure, based on all the information given to us, we will make the best decision for the town of Southbridge. So I want to thank you all for all your hard work. With that, the process, I believe, I think what we'll do is we'll go around the room as, just like we do with counselors forum. We'll start with one counselor, and they can talk about what their thoughts were about the search itself and what they thought about the three candidates and whatever they want to discuss about that interview and who they perceive as, you know, a possible fit for the town of Southbridge. And then after we go through all the counselors, we'll take a vote to say whether we do have a candidate to entertain and offer to or not. Search consultant, I want to thank them too. Bernie, I didn't mean to neglect you. Bernie is on with us this evening. I'd like to thank Community Paragon for their guidance during this search process as well. I want to say, the guidance that you gave us, the feedback that you were able to provide, the information, top-notch by your group and your team, and I thank you very much and look forward to working with you as we appoint someone and move forward the process. So thank you very much, Bernie. So if anybody has any questions during the course of the meeting that you wish to address through Bernie, again, we're limited because of the feed with counselors back and forth. So if anybody out there in the audience that's tied into this meeting remotely, if you have YouTube or the cable access, that's the way to watch it in real time. Okay? Sound good? All right. So with that, I will guess I will start with my colleague, Counselor Katrona, who served on the search committee, to give some thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to all three candidates first for coming forward. I know it was some difficult decisions on behalf of the search committee, but I believe at the end, they presented us with three very qualified candidates. Thank you to the candidates as well, all three, who spent time here just a couple nights ago interviewing with us. To me personally, one candidate stood out. I believe his education, he's multiple degrees, he's bilingual in three different languages. His project management skills, he has a law degree, and I believe he can help us out in this community through, especially with budget season, with project management knowledge, and also as his skills with being an attorney. He's been a member of the MMA, so he's very familiar and he's very knowledgeable with that as well. He spoke very at length about his community involvement, his management styles, and he spoke about the schools, and he's not afraid to take a leadership role if it comes time for budget. And they ask this, and he says, no, this is what I'm going to give you. Michael McCall stood out to me as a very good candidate to be our next town manager. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Katrona. Counselor Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I basically have to say I agree with Joe on that particular point. A couple of things that jumped out for me on him was the fact that he sends himself email and text messages for reminders on the stuff that we tell him that we want to be looked at so that it doesn't get forgotten, and about deadlines and other stuff like that, and I think that's certainly very helpful. I liked the communication aspect, his multilingual aspect, it's going to be a big seller, I think, in our community, and a really nice way to get the people who have been feeling kind of left out in our community to come forward and maybe participate a lot more than they have in recent years anyway. So that would be nice. I liked the idea of his willingness to use a fair amount of regionalism. We were talking about the curbside issues and the idea of a regional compact, certainly it's worth looking at. His experience with grant work and some of the other stuff that he was doing, and I like the fact that he is kind of, he hasn't sort of kind of let his ideas of doing what it would take to do a town managership set in stone because this would be his first town manager slot. So we will have an opportunity to work with him and kind of, and have a situation where we can kind of mold him as he kind of molds us at the same time, because we can take advantage of his experience in all of these various other areas, and he can take advantage of our experience being, you know, being in Southbridge and having seen the way this town operates. So even though, even though he mentioned specifically that he doesn't have a specific background in a town council form of government, I don't think that would be an issue with him. And I also like the fact that he was commenting on, one of the last things he said was, "I learned the most from any situation when the times were tough." And we're going through tough times, Southbridge has, to some degree, been going through tough times for a while now. So I think we need somebody who can handle the toughness pretty effectively. And as far as the other guys go, they were, they were interested. I thought, I thought Mr. Kramer had an interesting perspective, being from North Carolina. You know, I've always been going into the, I was, I thought it was interesting where he was talking, but he had his background, a lot of stormwater and related stuff, which we're going to have to do, and I brought that up during the questioning. But a lot of the other stuff that, quite frankly, he seemed like a nice enough guy. He might, he might have a lot more experience than, that came across during the course of our interview. It seemed very general in ways that he, it looked like he kind of, kind of skirted the issues by looking, but when he did his homework on our town, and it didn't seem like there was a lot of depth there. And as far as Mr. Guarino goes, he's got a lot of experience, but it's kind of one of those circumstances, I think, where it's almost the exact opposite of Mr. McCall, where he's got so much more experience, I think he would be coming into our community and kind of trying to do things based on a lot of his own experience that may not fit into our community. Whereas I think Mr. McCall's relative, and a relative lack of experience in that particular role may actually be a better fit for us, which sounds odd, but I think you understand based on what I said earlier. And also, I wanted to say, just as far as the search itself goes, I wanted to commend Bernie and John Petron for reaching out to us at the very beginning and sitting down and talking to us at length about some of the things that we thought were important and the issues that we saw in town. I remember sitting down with John probably for an hour and a half or so, well, on the phone. And it was just, it was an interesting conversation, and it was obvious that he knew a lot about what town government works, as says Bernie. And I think that makes a huge difference as far as the whole search process itself goes. So between their work and the work of the committee itself, I would agree with what you said, Mr. Chairman, is that I think we, this was definitely, I think, a far better run search than the last ones that, I wasn't, I was part of the last one, and I had observed some of the other previous ones as, as a reporter, and I would agree that this is probably the best one I've seen too.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you.
You might have to bring the mic a little bit closer because...
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'd like to thank the committee for doing a great job of finding these candidates. I know it was probably pretty difficult. We were going through a difficult period, and, but I thought you did a pretty good job. As far, as far as the candidates go, I really don't have a problem with any of the candidates. I thought they were all pretty qualified. Clearly Attorney McCall is the frontrunner. I thought he would be fine. I really don't have a problem with Attorney McCall, and I think that him saying that he wants to make his own mark, I don't think that's a good understanding of the charter because really, the town council holds the general powers in this town. It's the town council who will leave its mark, and he basically works for the town council. He sets, we set the policy, he follows through with the policy. But having said that, I don't have a problem with Mr. McCall, or Attorney McCall, I thought he was a fine candidate. Guarino, Guarino, he, he may not have the educational background, but I thought he had a lot more experience. He makes up for inexperience, and for some reason, I just like the guy. And sometimes when you like somebody, maybe it's a gut feeling, but I just kind of like Guarino. Kramer, he had a great resume, but somehow it got lost in translation or something, and I don't think he did a very good interview. So I would have to go with Guarino at this point, but like I said, I don't have a problem with Attorney McCall. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. First, I want to extend my thanks to the search committee, to Vice Chairman Daniel and Mr. Katrona and all the members here tonight. Thank you. You guys gave us three wonderful candidates. I haven't been part of a manager's search before, but I've been a part of a superintendent's search, and dang, this is even more professional than some of the superintendent searches I've been on. So thank you, guys. You guys did a wonderful job. As to the interviews, going to be plain, the one that stood out to me the most was Mr. McCall. Mr. McCall spoke plainly, bluntly. He used a lot of "we." He didn't take credit where credit wasn't due. He tried to give credit to people who did stuff for him and helped him get set up, and I think that's a great, great skill. I think it, it shows that he respects the work of the people under him and around him, and that's really important, especially when we're talking about morale. I also like the fact that he's multilingual. I think that's really unique, and I think that's going to be a good advantage for this community. Mr. Guarino did well. I think at times he did get a little rambly. However, he seems like a nice guy. He's got a lot of experience. And the third interview, it got a little lost, maybe it was the medium, but I just didn't see it as going as well as the other two. He was perfectly qualified, had a lot of experience, especially in different states. But at this time, I have to say, Mr. McCall seems like the best fit for this community, and I intend to fully support him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dow.
I want to thank everybody who worked on the candle to be able to provide it to the town council to interview with them. I think the three of them did well, and good luck for all three of them tonight. And I just want to say, as our, we are the town council to provide an agenda and provide it to the future town manager and follow if he's doing the right thing and hold them accountable for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I usually write things down because I will forget about them in a heartbeat. So I want to thank the committee, I know how hard you worked and how thankless it can be at times, especially after you make the decision and, and people get to critique the job that was done. So I will not be the Monday morning quarterback. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you did on your own time and volunteered to help our town out. I want to thank the candidates, the three that came forward. That was pretty tough to come in front of people you don't know, a town you're not really sure of, and especially someone coming all the way from North Carolina via social, or via teleconferencing and trying to do an interview that way. It's pretty tough, so, but I do want to thank them. First thing, I'll go with Mr. Kramer. I, the pros, I thought it was a good interview that he did, especially trying to, everybody to hear him and try to understand what some of the questions that we were trying to ask. He obviously did some homework as best he could through the internet, but I think that got lost a little bit in translation because if you haven't seen our town or the dynamics of our town, it's pretty hard to look on the internet and try to figure those things out. So I felt, although that was a pro, it also was a con because just trying to know our town. I was impressed, the fact that there was capital projects that he took hold of down in North Carolina, and he completed those capital projects. And as most of us counselors know, that there's plenty of capital projects that need to be done, and, you know, that would be a perfect fit. He was honest about his school. I would say all of them were kind of honest about the school receivership and, but willing to deal with it. And I like the fact that he has been part of an emergency operations center, which is a big plus, especially those, those are the type of tangible things that not a lot of managers are going to have, and when you need them, you need them, and it's very important. The cons, again, would be the fact that it's North Carolina, and this town needs to have a town manager that's ready to go, understanding Mass. General Law and our own policies within our town, and quickly gets spun up. Mr. Guarino, I really appreciated all of his experience, and I know it's probably going to be tough, 13 years at one place, 14 years at one place, and then to have, politically have to be, time to move along, you know? And I know he has got a lot of experience, and he, I believe, will do well wherever he goes, be it here or other places. He sought to view our town, came down here, spent a few days down here. He also reached out to department heads and other personnel to understand our town and some of the dynamics that we do have. He is a, if I'm not mistaken, I didn't get to see his notes as he was writing, but he is obviously one of those believers in a short pencil is better than the longest memory. So he wrote things down, which I really appreciated. I like the fact that he brought up, he has no problem doing evaluation on town employees and have a process in place to be able to come to the town council down the road and say, "I do recommend this individual for reappointment," or confirm to the town council because we, we as the taxpayers and they as employees pay a heavy price. I like the fact that he brought up the water line and the IMA and willing to work with that down the road with Charlton. I do respect his experience and that he's available all the time, even though he may live up in another state or a little distance from here, but he's available to us, and he made that very, very clear. I will say, as far as a con was concerned, if there was any con on there, it would be the general answers that we received. He did come up with some specific things, but I did write down multiple times, it seemed to be a general answer, and that's based on my own personal and professional experience. Mr. McCall made it very clear from the outset he's available to the town council 24/7, and obviously if it's to the town council, it means it's to the residents as well and the employees that work here. Talked about building a team. I hear a lot lately, it was my team, but I like the fact that he brought up our team because it is our team. Talked about strategic thinking, and not a lot of people understand what strategic thinking is and proper planning process and how, how much it takes a toll on an individual to get it right the best they can, even though you have hiccups down the road. And I like the fact that he talked about strategic thinking. He gave credit where credit was due. There was times when, I don't know if anybody heard, there's a couple of times where he gave credit to individuals that were kids, and, and he didn't take credit for himself. He just said, "Hey, this individual came with it, we ran, we ran with it, and we went from there." So obviously, he's humble in that experience, and I would say that as well as Mr. Guarino. I like the fact that he brought up something that I think, it popped in my mind, was utilizing snow and ice, just something outside the box thinking, snow and ice for roads, leftover funds. I don't know if we've ever brought that up. I mean, that was a surprise, and that was a good surprise. That's what we want in a town manager. Bilingual, obviously, with our dynamics and our cultural diversity within our town, you have to have something like that, and I think it's, it's a plus for our town. I don't have a problem with him ever saying he wants to make his mark. I don't think he wants to make his mark as far as a town council member. I think he wants to make his mark as a town manager, and that's okay. And I want them, him to do that. And I've said from the very beginning that I'm looking for a town manager that may not have all the experience under the sun, but is willing to jump in headfirst and ready to go, and learn from mistakes and learn from employees and learn, constantly learning, looking in the mirror and challenging oneself. I like the fact he talked about curbside recycling. Though it may have been many years ago, that'll come back, and it'll hopefully benefit if the town council votes that way, help us down the road. If you look at his resume, one thing very impressive on all the resumes, if you look at his resume, to me, it was pretty impressive that he didn't have a problem changing paths. I mean, he's done quite a few things. Now, looks great on resume, it looks great in an interview process. Obviously, if he is selected or if any of these are selected, they have to put actions to words, and we know, I'll leave that alone. The only con I would say is that when I asked him about the redevelopment authority, I don't believe, and maybe I didn't hear it, I don't know if he understood what I was asking the question, or he didn't understand redevelopment authority, but I still, again, believe it's a very important committee within our town to help our town move along with Blight and other programs. So that's all I have to say right now until we vote.
Thank you.
Unless you want me to do a recommendation at this point?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Lazo.
I'd just like to thank the search committee, each and every one of the volunteers that worked on the search. I, I've served on search committees, they have thankless jobs, you work hard, you present something to a board, the board appoints it, and you gauge on the quality of the people that you put forward, really throws sunshine on the search. And seeing how strong the final three candidates were, that shows that the sunshine on the search, it's done properly, it was done professionally, and the three people that came through were excellent candidates. I really believe we could appoint any one of the three, would work for the town of Southbridge. But in my experience, in the years that I've been involved in government searches, town managers, the question is, who fits in Southbridge right now with the issues we have, with the former government we have, with the counselors that are sitting, the citizenry that's ready? And I'm going to come out and thank Tom Guarino. I'm going to thank Mike Kramer. Job well done. And I'm going to leave it at that. I don't think I should have analyzed the two gentlemen for one reason. It wasn't that close. When you, when the, Mike McCall sat up and started talking, if he had an answer, he gave it to you straight. If he didn't have an answer, he said, "I didn't know." He didn't continuously talk and try and make an answer to cover himself. "I don't know, I'll find out." That's what I like to hear from a town manager. As he spoke, I'm looking for this, you know, as some counselors have already said, you see a resume. They all look pretty strong in certain areas. This resume was different. This resume, he was an elected official finance committee, he understands how this side of the line works. At the same time, he understands the other side of the line, management. And you throw in a law degree on top of it, and all of a sudden you're looking at it and you're saying, "This is almost too good to be true." So as we spoke, maybe we'll need an extra interview with two finalists if they're close. After these finalists spoke, I did not think that it was close enough for another interview with, say, the top two. When a gentleman starts talking about an open door policy, not only for the council, for the citizens, department heads, seemed like he rolled right into his other comment of team concept. We're all on the same team, we're going to disagree, but I think the final outcome is all of what, what we push for, what we want. I love the team concept, open door policy. He coupled it with his communication paramount to all his workings, accountability oversight, short and long-term planning, taxpayer-friendly. I haven't heard a town manager say that in 30 years. When you take this package and you put it together, and you look at the experience the gentleman has today on both sides of the line, the knowledge he's garnered through education and experience, I sat here and said, "This gentleman fits." We're not trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. The search committee did a fantastic job, and when the interview was finalized, I sit here today and am ready to vote for Mike Kramer 110%.
Mike Kramer or Mike?
I'm sorry. Mike McCall. I got too many names written down. Mike McCall, to me, was ahead above the other candidates. They were all good, but I'm ready to support Mike McCall. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd also like to thank the search committee for the fine work that they did, beyond fine work that they did, the excellent work that they did. The council's been very kind to us tonight and effusive in their praise, and I think it's well-deserved and justified. I think the committee did good work because we had excellent people on the committee that were dedicated, that wanted to do the best for Southbridge, that wanted to provide candidates that the council could look at and be justifiably impressed by in terms of making a selection for the next town manager. of making a selection for the next town manager. And from the bottom of my heart, I thank you all very much for the work that you did. It was a wonderful, wonderful job. For the sake of people who might be watching tonight that haven't been watching previously, just a quick idea about the process. We advertised nationally with the help of a search firm, Community Paradigm, and we ended up with 28 applicants from throughout the country. It wasn't just locally, Massachusetts or New England, we were up and down the eastern seaboard and into the western part of the country. The 28 applicants were cultivated into eight semifinalists, which we interviewed, and we recommended the three finalists that you're hearing about tonight. I want to thank the three finalists, excuse me, for taking an interest in Southbridge and bringing their best forward to us on Tuesday night. I'm pleased that people take the town seriously enough, that they want to come forward to help us out, and that they're not paying attention to what they may have heard about Southbridge, but instead they did their homework, they looked up everything they could find on Southbridge, they talked to people in Southbridge, and they found out that we're a damn good community and worthy of being working here. I'll start with Mr. Kramer, I think he did a great job in his interview. However, I think that as the interview progressed, it became evident that there might be a little too much of a learning curve in terms of what he would need to do to hit the road running in terms of learning how the state of Massachusetts works. I think Massachusetts is a little unique, I think that the political climate here is unique, and by here, I mean within the state, not the town necessarily. And I think that the learning curve might be just a bit too much for too long a period of time. Mr. Guarino was, is a wonderful candidate, he has vast experience in terms of working with the state and with different community members. He has project experience similar to what we require here. He's used to working with the council that may or may not be in disagreement with him, and he's able to reach consensus and compromise. He has finance experience, capital project experience, many capital projects in terms of things like the firehouse like we're looking at, and he could bring that forward to us. However, I believe that Mr. McCall came to the top. When I was comparing what he had for qualities, what he talked about, compared to the position statement that was created by the questioning that Counselor Steve's alluded to earlier in terms of what we were looking for in a town manager. His being a former selectman, working on the finance committee in Chelmsford, working as an assistant town manager, he's got that background right off the top. And being a selectman and a thin con member gives him a unique view from the taxpayers' sense, not from above looking down, but from the people that are paying the bills. And I think that that's very important that our town manager have. One thing that he mentioned in the semifinal interview that he didn't get a lot of into in the final interview, was that he believes in emails and making lists, and he believes in getting that out to the council and to the, to people that need the information as quickly and expediently as possible. In today's day and age, things happen quickly and you need quick responses, and in order for us to be responsive to our constituents, in order for the department heads to be responsive to the townsfolk, they need information. And Mr. McCall definitely came across to me as someone that would provide that information basically on a moment's notice at any given time. So I think that stood out. He has project management experience, he has procurement experience, he's not a micromanager, he is a team and collaborative player. He does extensive, he has extensive experience in contract negotiations, which I think is a benefit for us. He's crafted budgets, he had a unique understanding of the downtown, to the point that he was talking about a stratified building structure in the downtown involving residents, restaurants, businesses, office space, and that's a little something different that I haven't heard about yet in terms of the downtown and the potential for the downtown, and that impressed me. He has a, basically a first name relationship with the state and federal congresspeople in his home district. I don't think he's got them on speed dial, but he's got their numbers, and he knows, he knows people. And there's no reason to believe that he isn't gonna learn who the people are here and get to communicate with them on a regular basis to the benefit of the town. I think, I think we need to make a name for ourselves with the government, the state government and the federal government, and I think he's capable of doing that for us. He complimented us on having a strong stabilization fund, which means that, to me, that he is protecting our tax dollars, that he's not just gonna spend money left and right, or want to spend money left and right, but instead he wants to establish a strong savings account for us, especially in terms of when you need emergency spending capability. And I know that a strong stabilization fund makes for a better bond rating, so that when we do need to go out and find money, that would put us in a better position. I'm very impressed by the fact that he is cultured. He lived in Germany for a while, or in Austria, I forget which. He's fluent in three other languages besides English. He's empathetic to cultural diversity and cultural differences, and I think that's important for the town. He's not afraid of challenges, and I think that Southbridge is gonna be a challenge. I think it's gonna be a challenge for all of us, and especially now with the virus and the implications of the virus and budgetary matters, I think he's gonna have to hit the road running and running fast. So at this point, I'm not afraid to say that if it comes down to a vote, I would support Mr. McCall.
Thank you, Council. So, thank you all for your input, and I'm not gonna rehash a lot of what you all said, because you're right about all three candidates, I thought they did a fabulous job. And I'll go to like what Council Lousa said, because one really stood out. The candidate from North Carolina, North Carolina, South Carolina? Did a, did a good job on the interview, but it was difficult being on the, the media platform that we were at. And I just, I agree with what Counselor Daniel said, right now I think we're in a position that we need somebody that understands Massachusetts laws, the Massachusetts landscape. There's no doubt if we were in a position of strength, that we could have a leader like that come in and provide some organizational overviews and maybe look at some of the strategies that we use and fine tune them. But at this point, to have a candidate from out of state, while he was a very strong candidate and had all the qualities that would make him a successful manager, we don't have time in the town of Southbridge right now to train an individual up to get them to the Massachusetts level of understanding with, when it comes to procurement and the finances of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and cherry sheets and all that. We are in a position budgetarily where we need somebody that's gonna hit the ground running and make sure that we are given the best information on a fiscal responsibility landscape, as well as an individual that would have knowledge of the Massachusetts educational system. Even though a town manager is not intimately involved in the educational process, they should understand the Department of Ed and have contacts within the Department of Ed. So for that matter, you know, I didn't see him as a fit at this time for the town of Southbridge. The other two gentlemen, Mr. Guarini and Mr. McCall. Mr. Guarini, outstanding interview as far as knowledge of the job, he's been doing the job a long time. To stay in a town for 13 years is a credit to his ability to work with that board at that time, because we all know what the shelf life of managers are. I mean, Southbridge is, I know we get, you know, some grief that we can't keep managers, but let's face it, the average tenure of managers is three to five years, I mean, that's their shelf life. We hope that whoever we pick stays longer than that, but Mr. Guarino had a breadth of knowledge when it came to the landscape of Massachusetts and economics and his leadership style. I had watched him on a different interview, which was public, about his leadership style, a walking around type thing, and I think he would be a fit for Southbridge as well. But when it came to Mr. McCall, I looked at it, and I've had conversations with, you know, residents and people employed by the town and people that knew Mr. McCall from Chelmsford. And it was said to me here in the town hall yesterday by one of the people that work here, and I never looked at this, when you look at an assistant town manager, an assistant town manager is the doer in an office in a big city, or a bigger town, and the town manager is above them, but the assistant town manager is the one that really runs the day-to-day operations in the trenches. And when I looked for a town manager, the quality that I was really looking for this, and our next candidate, was somebody that was gonna get into the trenches and be there day-to-day, working on the multitude of issues that we have in the town. One of the questions that I think I asked of all the candidates, and I know it's a big thing for that Council Katrona always hops on and Council Lousa, was oversight, project management and oversight. And I tried to drill down with these candidates about how would you go about managing projects to make sure that they're done in a timely manner, fiscally responsible? And I linked a couple of projects that we have that are outstanding, that have lingered, about how you would go about developing that project. The best answer by far by any of the three candidates was by Mr. McCall, where he said, "We have what we wanna do, this is where we want to be, and I work my way backwards, and we have a plan." And of course, he also noted, "You have hiccups, but we build in contingencies." I love that answer, because that's how we should be operating as a town. So I look at an individual that maybe doesn't have the top rung of being a town manager, but he certainly understands that if we as a council work with him, and this council the last two years, I can't answer for the previous year, so it's not a slam on previous councils, but I know in the last two years, we've put together concrete goals and objectives with the town manager, with deadlines and all that. And I just see this individual would be able to provide guidance and work with us on those deadlines and say, "If we want this by this date, this is where we as a council and a community wanna be, how are we gonna get there, Mr. Manager?" And I just thought his answers were, gave me such hope that, yes, and the, I set calendar reminders, I set emails that, "I'm gonna make sure that we are following through." I really enjoyed that answer. The other question that's near and dear to my heart, and I know Council Ryan, Council Lousa, and other councils, but us people that have been in the school committee side, was his answer to the question about receivership, and how does he believe that the town manager has a seat at the table with the receiver? And he said, "Yes." And he also mentioned, "We will not be subordinate to the state," that we should be taking the lead as well. And that is very important, and that's what I wanna see in a town manager. How do we get, we've talked about it, it's passionate, how do we come up with an exit plan to get out of receivership? So to me, if he's true to his word about planning and strategic planning, the goal is come out of receivership, Mr. Town Manager, sit with the receiver and the state, give us concrete deadlines and benchmarks that we have to manage, we've asked for that for two years, and I just think Mr. McCall would do that. To Council Adams' point about snow and ice, that was something that just came out of left field. We talk about budgets, and we talk about money, and I know during the budget season, Council Marquetti said, and said, "Why do we have to have that $400,000 in snow and ice? Why does it have to be capped at that?" And they give us the answer about, "Well, you have to make sure you set that limit, and you know, you don't wanna go under it, but it's there, and that's how you build it in your budget." Okay, so we've built into the budget $200,000 for roads, we have $400,000 of snow and ice, when we have that good year, it's built into the budget. Why not take it out and do a road and have a plan if it's available? That was such out-of-the-box thinking. And the last thing was, I think all of us talk and we're very cognizant of the fiscal crisis that is currently here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the fact that the state has not provided us any guidelines as to what our budgets will be, what our budgets will, I don't know who that is, hold on. What our budget numbers will be for the next fiscal year. And he stated, and we had asked many times, "What is our contingency here in Southbridge? What is our thoughts for fiscal '21? Do we have any contingency budgets?" And I like the fact that they came up with a contingency budget without laying off people, identify some sources of revenue and planning, and it is all about planning. So by far, while any of those candidates, and they're all strong candidates, by far to me, Mr. McCall, at this time, would be the best fit, in my opinion, to work with us as a council as we move forward in the town. So with that, does anybody else have anything else they wanna say before we move on?
Just a question on procedure, just kind of what the next steps are gonna be. How are we going to do, are we just gonna go right to the motion and just accept names? Or are we gonna do like a roll call vote?
It'll be, and somebody will entertain a motion to a finalist if they want, and I think, I think we have a consensus of who the top candidate is, so with that, we'll take a roll call vote on that. So it would be a roll call vote on that. Council Lousa, am I mistaken on that?
No, Mr. Chairman, on the next agenda item, you have it set up, a vote to appoint, and it says finalist. I think it would be appropriate to read that and then amend that, amend it to put the name in.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for the guidance, but yeah, I left it that way, because I was like, "How do I word this?", but you know, so that somebody in the public, in transparency, would know that we are voting to appoint one of the finalists, not anybody else, as town manager. So, does that answer your question, Council?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. All right. Item six, vote to appoint finalist as town manager for the town of Southbridge, subject to successful contract negotiations or take any other action. Town charter, section 4-1-1, requires a majority vote of the full council, which would mean that it would be five votes of the council. Council Daniel?
I move to vote to appoint Michael McCall as town manager for the town of Southbridge, subject to successful contract negotiations.
Second. So a motion of second? Is that as an amendment?
Amendment to the main.
To the main motion, okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment on that?
It's not really an amendment, he was making the motion.
He was making a motion, but I think you meant to amend it to have Michael McCall as that, is that correct? So we'll term it as an amendment?
Whatever.
Okay, so the vote to amend item six, which to include vote to appoint Michael McCall as the town manager. So I have a motion of second on the amendment, any discussion on the amendment? Council Marquetti?
Just for clarification, so if we're gonna vote for, we're gonna decide on McCall, so it's either you like McCall, you wanna vote for McCall, or you don't?
Correct.
There's no other candidate? We're not gonna go around and say, "Who do you like? I like so and so", we're just gonna vote for McCall?
We're gonna vote for a candidate, yes.
So, I mean, Mr. Chair, if I may.
On the amendment, right.
Yeah, it's on the amendment. So if people want to, since this is just the amendment, if you want a different finalist and you don't agree, maybe you could just vote no on the amendment, and when it comes down to the final motion, you could vote for the motion, is the way I would, I guess, interpret that, correct?
Go ahead, Council Lousa.
The amendment, if you look at your agenda, agenda item number six is the actual motion to hire somebody. The amendment is to plug in the name Mike McCall. So, Council Daniels has plugged in the amendment of Mike McCall to the agenda item that's been posted, and that will be voted on. So if you're in favor of Mike McCall, you vote for the amendment, and then the main motion will be as read.
Yeah, correct. And if you don't want that candidate, and he's not acceptable, then, go ahead, Council Marquetti.
Well, as I said before, I don't have a problem with McCall. So even though I would rather have Guarino, I don't have a problem with McCall, so I'd be happy to vote for McCall. That's the consensus, that's fine. I don't have a problem with him.
So we have a motion that was amended? Any other discussion on the amendment? I'm gonna do a roll call on the amendment. Madam Secretary?
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lousa?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on the motion as amended to vote to appoint Michael McCall as the town manager for the town of Southbridge? McCall as the town manager for the town of Southbridge? Any further discussion?
I get it.
Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Unanimous of all present. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you and have a good evening. I will contact the candidate and advise you of something. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.